Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease, available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
It's 6:00 PM on January 7th, 2025. I am convening this meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20-F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, I note for the record that participating this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance, if you are willing and able to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, on our agenda is approval of minutes, and we have the minutes for October 22nd and December 3rd of 2024, last year's minutes. Liz, are you prepared?
Yes.
Bill?
Prepared.
I'm prepared then to accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes dated October 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated December 3rd, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is to proclaim January 7th today, 2025, as Adelia Day in the Town of Hingham. And Liz, can I call on you to just introduce the proclamation?
Sure. So Adelia Sklutt, a member of our community, sadly she passed away from a rare form of cancer last year. The community has come together to support her and her family through her illness and in her passing, as well as has really been inspired to spread kindness and raise money for other children going through this horrible journey. So we were able to honor her at a memorial service last June, but wanted to do something special on today, which is her birthday.
And Liz, you did something special this morning.
I had the honor of reading the proclamation to the South School community. So I went to South School and read it over the morning announcements. So all the students heard it this morning, as well as the staff, and they were encouraged to do kindness, acts of kindness all day today. So I'm sure they were successful in that.
That was great. So I would ask Liz if you would read the first three paragraphs, and Bill if you do the following two, and then I'll read the concluding one.
Sure. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts, proclamation honoring Adelia Sklutt. Whereas Adelia Sklutt, known fondly as Adelia the Wonder Girl, bravely inspired her community during her courageous battle against EMG, a rare and aggressive form of brain cancer. And whereas Adelia's strength and resilience shone brightly throughout her 15-month journey of treatments, leaving an indelible mark on all who had the privilege of knowing her. And whereas Adelia's sparkling eyes and infectious personality touched the hearts of everyone she encountered, her old soul and witty sense of humor leaving lasting impressions.
And whereas at the young age of eight, Adelia had consistently embraced life with an unparalleled spirit of adventure and a profound love for her family, teaching us all to cherish each moment, love more deeply, and find beauty in every aspect of life. And whereas her passing in 2024 has deeply saddened our community, yet Adelia's bright light continues to shine as a reminder of the enduring power of courage and love.
Now therefore, we, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, Select Board of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Adelia's Day of Birth, January 7th, as Adelia the Wonder Girl Day in the Town of Hingham, and urge all citizens to observe this day by emulating the spirit and attitude of Adelia Sklutt. We honor her memory, celebrate her life, and extend our heartfelt condolences to her family. Signed, the 7th day of January 2025, by myself, Joseph M. Fisher, William C. Ramsey, and Elizabeth F. Klein, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to proclaim January 7th, 2025, as Adelia the Wonder Girl Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. It's sad, but it's also uplifting that this town is willing to extend the recognition and support to her family. Next on our agenda is to consider approval of the application for a transfer of license from Ocean Kai Inc. to Ocean Kai Restaurant Inc., 300 Lincoln Street in Hingham. I don't know if, is Jeff online? Jeff Tachio?
Yes. Hello, I'm online.
And before you proceed, I should have noted for the record that we have Tom Mayo, our town administrator, participating remotely. I've asked him not to be here in person because he's not feeling well, and he's safeguarding all of us by participating remotely, so thank you, Tom.
No offense, Jeff.
So moving on to Ocean Kai, Mr. Tachio.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm here for the transfer, Section 12 Restaurant License on premise, it's for 300 Lincoln Street, the Ocean Kai. As you mentioned, Ocean Kai Inc. to Ocean Kai Restaurant Inc., the current owners. Luciana Wong is the mother of the applicant today, Connie Tachio, and it's a transfer into family. From mother to daughter, Connie has been the manager for the last 10 years, so she's been the manager of record, and she's been there, employed for 25 years full-time, and then intermittently for many, many years prior to that. We've got full certifications, everything has been submitted, it's from unemployment certificates, also DOR, certificates of good standing, Corey, also very recently this afternoon, and I sent it into Sharon, but the tips training for Connie and also her staff, so you should receive that as well. It's going to remain basically the same, so the floor plan that is on file and submitted will remain the same. And again, it'll be a continuity within the family of ownership, and we were able to answer any questions. Connie is here as well, and with that, we can answer any questions that you've got.
I mean, I've reviewed the application. I think it's complete, and I do note for the record, the police chief has reviewed the restaurant and has had no issues. So I'm prepared to proceed. Liz?
Yes, I reviewed the application. I have no questions or issues with it.
Mr. Ramsey?
No questions.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions on this application?
[inaudible]
Okay. I am seeing none, so I am prepared to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request for a transfer of license from Ocean Kai Incorporated, doing business as Ocean Kai, 300 Lincoln Street, Hingham. Connie Wong Tachio, manager, to Ocean Kai Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Ocean Kai, 300 Lincoln Street, Hingham. Connie Wong Tachio, manager, in accordance with the application for a transfer of license filed with the Town of Hingham on December 4th, 2024, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. It's approved. Jeff?
Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Happy New Year. See you soon. Bye-bye. Thanks, guys.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the entertainment license submitted by Ironwood Trio Corporation, 274 South Street in Hingham. And I believe we have Tina?
Good. How are you?
Good. Just introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Tina Conti from Ironwood Restaurant in Hingham.
Okay. And what is it that you are looking to have us approve?
Business as usual is a few things that we do there. We have trivia night on Tuesdays.
When you say "there," that's the South Shore Country Club.
Oh, yes, yes.
So people understand.
Yep, so sorry. Yep, at the South Shore Country Club, yep, Ironwood Restaurant. Trivia nights we usually do on Tuesdays, we're going to try to keep that going. We host--
That's Tuesday evenings?
Yes.
So you're going to be asking us trivia questions this evening?
I didn't prepare. I didn't prepare anything, but--
Okay, okay.
How old is the building? No, just kidding.
Is there anyone here who knows?
He knows, he went to school there.
Take the fifth on that one.
I don't even know how old it is. I think 103 years, but-- We host wedding, we do weddings there, we're looking to continue to do the DJs and small bands.
Yep.
Live music on Sundays on the patio, and that just about sums it up.
And so you've listed on the application that forms of entertainment, which are live, non-live, and others, including film screenings and things like that?
Yes.
Yep. Michelle, do we, I'm not aware of any concerns that any department has raised with this?
I'm not aware of any as well.
Okay. Liz, any questions?
I'm assuming this is the same entertainment license that they had before, that Greenside Grill had, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, yeah, no questions or concerns.
Okay.
Bill?
Just going to ask you, how's the transition going?
Very well.
Good.
Yeah. Cleaning, so I'm very dirty. You're cleaning all day, so--
We thought you dressed up for it.
Please excuse the dust.
No, I mean, it's a valued resource of the town. Residents love it, and so we're looking forward to your long tenure here.
We are so looking forward to it as well. We've met a lot of the people, everyone's great, excited, it's getting us more excited. So yeah, we're feeling really great about this whole transition and the new phase, and it's amazing what some paint can do.
Yes.
Amazing.
So, do we have the certificates?
I believe the certificates are in there for signature after.
Okay, great. Any questions from any member of the public? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of an entertainment license to Ironwood Trio Corporation, 274 South Street, Hingham, in accordance with the application for an annual entertainment license filed with the Town of Hingham on December 19th, 2024, effective through December 31st, 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I am an aye as well. You've got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Allcom Technologies Inc. for the Emergency Notification Public Address System for the Public Safety Facility. I see Bob Garrity and David, you're going to participate as well.
Just in case.
Great, okay, good.
Thank you.
So Bob, if you could set this up for us, please.
Okay. Good evening. Bob Garrity, Chairman of the Public Safety Facility Building Committee. Tonight, we're asking the Select Board to award the Emergency Notification Public Address System that will be installed, hopefully, in the Public Safety Facility Building. The contractor who, that will be install, not installing, but providing and installing, and we can answer any questions on that if you'd like, is Allcom Technologies Inc. They are, Allcom Technologies specializes in the design, installation, and servicing of emergency notification public address systems in public buildings, especially fire houses and police departments. They've previously installed all types of systems in Hingham's three existing fire stations, all similar systems in the three Hingham fire stations, and they've done the exact same type of work on, for a number of the neighboring police stations and fire stations in the area, and this is their area of expertise. From all we can tell, they're very, very good at doing this type of work. Now, the system that, we'll call them Allcom, the system that Allcom will install consists of choosing and providing and installing speakers, lighting amplifiers, cabling, antenna, uninterrupted power supply sources and equipment, brackets, racks, and connectors for the emergency notification system. Now, the, Allcom will also provide training, software, installation, and licenses for the system, and the system itself is known in the business as a Zetron system. Now, Allcom will work in sync with the electrical subcontractor on the project, that's Griffin Electric. Griffin is the subcontractor to the general contractor, Call Antonio. Griffin and Call Antonio have already received a change order in which, that will, where Griffin will provide all the infrastructure and bringing all the different electrical services to accommodate this portion of the system. So they're all interconnected, but if you can look at it this way, is Griffin will do the final installation of all the conduits and everything that will accommodate the system. They're very familiar with the system that Allcom will be providing, and they really do work very closely together. In order to get the Allcom project to this point, Griffin has been directly involved in looking at the scope of work and working with the scope of work that Allcom has proposed, and the Fire Department and Police Department are, and architect, this design firm, and the OPM are all very supportive of this, and they all know just what it is. I couldn't explain it to you from a technical basis, but they all know what they're doing, and they did a very, very good job pulling all this together.
So Bob, if I can interrupt, so the cost here on this contract is just under $146,000.
Right.
Are there additional costs associated with Griffin or anyone else that will add on to the cost to get this done, or is that already baked into the project?
Well, the change, okay, the contract with Allcom that we're proposing is a unit price not to exceed contract--
Right.
--for, to install the 45 or 47 different unit price items that are in Exhibit A to the contract. The 145, 838 is coming out of our line item for technology in the building. The installation that Griffin will be doing is through a change order, and that change order was negotiated over the last month, and that's, I believe, $85,000, somewhere in that vicinity. And basically, like one simple explanation is Griffin will be putting all the conduits in to take care of the system, but they won't be putting the wiring and the wiring and all the different boxes and specialty work that Allcom will be providing, will be, have to connect into the entire system. So Griffin, Griffin, that work is budgeted for in the budget. We still have a change order contingency that, that money, the $85,000 or so, is, is in, within the current budgetary line item for change orders.
Got it, okay.
Thank you. Okay, so, let me see, the, the building, the building committee voted, took this up last night, okay, let's see, the building committee previously approved the scope of work after, that was just a couple of weeks ago, the, they recommended the approval, and I believe, I believe you folks have already approved the change order to do the work in the, but the actual contract to perform the scope of work then got turned over to Dave in his office, they did a super job, quickly putting together the contract with, with Allcom, and that contract is what, is what we are here today, hoping that you will approve. So the building committee took up that contract, which is, the front of it is basically, pretty much boilerplate, that you typically would want to see on any type of public contract like this. Exhibit A is the detail of just what they will provide. Exhibit B is a manufacturer's warranty for if anything breaks down on the project in a certain time period. Dave, again, Dave did a great job pulling it together very quickly, so at this point in time, we're requesting that the board, we are, well, my building committee took it up last night, and we did vote to recommend to the, to the board that they approve the Allcom contract in the form that's been provided to you folks.
So one of the things that we're looking to your committee for, and I think I know the answer, is you've got an approved scope of work, we want to make sure that the contract will fulfill that scope of work, and what I'm hearing is that the committee's determined that it will?
Yes.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions?
Just one question. You mentioned the software and training is included in this contract. Is there an annual license fee for the software?
I know licensing fees are part of what they owe us, I'm not sure how licensing fees work in this area, whatever is required in this area, that's, that's what the licensing fee is, that they would provide, so I don't know if they approve the licensing fee in the first, and then that's the end of it, as long as they don't change the license, or if there's some sort of an annual process for renewing the license fee. Anybody knows that?
With that, I'm assuming there probably is an annual license fee, and it would be part of the operating budget moving forward?
So we can, I'll double check with Bob and the committee after this, and as we put together the Public Safety Facility operating budget, like you're saying, which will now be in our Public Safety Utilities Department, we'll have to work things like that into it, along with the other utilities and costs that will be associated with running the building.
Okay, great. Thank you. No other questions. Thank you to the committee for putting this together.
Bob, can you talk more about what this system does, and I know we have Deputy Chief Levinson on the, on the call as well. Is this a system that, when a call comes into the Fire Department, it notifies firefighters to deploy to a situation, is that, is that what this system does, or it just, is it a general P.A. system for announcements within the building?
All of the above.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it takes care of any of the emergency calls that come in, and it also accommodates a regular public address system within the building, and it has all sorts of provisions that are geared toward making sure this system is in operation if there's any kind of an emergency that shuts down the regular electrical system. That's a big part of this, so if there's an emergency, a fire, I shouldn't say, but a prison break or something bad happens, and you're not just stuck with the basic electrical system, this provides a supplementary system that allows it to, to work.
Great, thank you.
So am I correct that when a call comes in, that's limited on the fire side? I don't think that, is this on the police side as well?
I'm not, I'm not sure. It usually is the fire side.
Bob is the fire side.
I think it's the fire side.
Yeah.
Dave? Yes, your hand is raised.
I should have mentioned that the Fire Department and Police Department have also been very closely working to make sure everybody got it right.
We have our Deputy Chief there.
Yeah, just to, yeah, it is right, it's, it's the fire side of it, for rec to tone us out when we get a call. The police typically are pretty much in over-the-air--
Right.
--through the radio system type of dispatch.
Okay, great, thank you. Tom, is there anything you wanted to add?
Nope, I'm good, thank you, Bob said it all, and the committee did, in fact, vote to recommend the, the contract.
You're looking like Santa Claus, you realize that? Just starting. Michelle, anything, anything you want to add?
Nothing further, thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? I am seeing none, so I am prepared to accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Allcom Technologies Incorporated for the Emergency Notification Public Address System for the Public Safety Facility in an amount not to exceed $145,838.79.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. It's approved, thank you, and please send our thanks to the committee, it's consistently the great work, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob.
We now move to the Audit Committee Chair presentation for the Fiscal Year 24 Financial Report and a potential vote to approve the 2024 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So if each of you could introduce yourselves, that would be terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Doug Varrington, I am the Chair of the Audit Committee, and I'm joined by Jim Pietrowski from Clifton Larson Allen, our accounting firm.
Jim Pietrowski, engagement principal on the audit for this year.
So you've been impressed with our diligence so far this evening, and that we can just go forward with the audit?
I want to go back to the--
The trivia question.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to present our report to the Select Board. The Audit Committee is charged with the responsibility to review the audit process, including the annual financial statements and the reports prepared by our auditors. We met several times over the course of the past year and reviewed ultimately five reports which have been provided to you for your review. Number one, the Town of Hingham Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, the ACRA, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Number two, the Town of Hingham GAO and Uniform Guidance Reports for the same fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Number three, the Town of Hingham Governance Communication Letter for the same fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Number four, the Town of Hingham Contributory Retirement System Pension Plan Schedules for the calendar year ended December 2023. And finally, the Town of Hingham Management Letter for the year ended, fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, which discusses internal controls and the ongoing status of previously reported items, as well as any upcoming regulatory changes. During our review, we noted the following key points. Number one, there were no material disagreements with management. Number two, the audited financial statements, which are included in the ACFR, received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion a governmental unit can receive. It indicates that the financial statements were prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP, and that they fairly presented in all material respects. There was a finding with respect to the GAO Uniform Guidance Reports, and as a result, we did receive a modified opinion, which is an except-for opinion, on that report with respect to an issue related to allowable costs related to overtime submitted by the Fire Department, which lacked adequate documentation and support. As a result of that finding, the issue, again, caused a modified opinion, and that issue is in fact being addressed by management with the Fire Department. That is the essence of the report.
Jim, do you want to add anything?
Sure. I, I think I would just like to express our appreciation for another overall very smooth audit process for this year, especially to Anne with it being her first year. We really appreciated she ensuring that the information was ready to go and that we were able to, to schedule a day when the information would be ready and it allowed us to, to come in and complete our testing swiftly. I do want to think of a few other folks that throughout the town, Lori Magner, the treasurer collector, Kevin Whelan at the country club, Aisho Pong at the school department, as well as Benny others throughout the process, so overall made it smooth as far as us being able to get our testing done. So, overall made it a smooth process. Did have a few findings and recommendations on the management letter as well as the GAO report, but nothing significantly concerning to this point. So, we appreciate everybody's effort through the process.
And I would actually, on my own behalf as well as that of committee members, would like to also thank Anne for stepping up and, and making a transition from, you know, someone who's governed this process for a long, long time and really did it fairly seamlessly. So, much appreciated. I'd also like to note, I, I noted the committee members on the document provided to you. Jason Price is the newest member of our committee and frankly joined for the last meeting during which we approved the reports. So, to be fair to Jason, he abstained on a, you know, he read the reports and approved them, but did not participate in the year-long process. So, I wanted to make sure that was communicated.
Got it. Michelle, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, just thank everyone for, it's a sort of a beast to pull all this together and appreciate Anne and the audit committee and Jim's whole team in, in getting it done. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayo, anything you wanted to add?
No, but again, just like Michelle, I mean, we had that one tick with the fire department. That chief is working on it. The, we've cleaned up a few things that we've heard in the past. Anne's work has been substantial and well-done this year. And of course, Jim, you and your team are, are gold. So, thank you for all you do for the town.
Thank you. So, with, with respect to the issue with the fire department, I guess in my experience, there are two things to be addressed. Number one is to make sure that what's been reported is, is accurate. And second, to make sure there are systems in place so that we don't have a recurrence. Are both of those in the works?
Yes, they are.
My understanding.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you, Doug, to you and the committee, Jim and your team, and Anne and your team. I know it's, it's quite a bit of work and painstaking work, I'm sure. As far as the, the next steps, the issue being addressed by, by management, what is the, the timeline for that, Tom? Or kind of what is, what is the next benchmark to make sure that that's on track?
So, Steve, we ran out of time to get the material to Jim and his team timely, and I think that was a big part of the problem. But it's all, I don't know, Jim, has it been submitted to already?
Yes, our, the materials that we've received and tested, we've gotten the, the scope of everything that we've requested and expect to test at this point.
They just didn't have it, Liz, by the time that they were, when they were doing the audit.
So, that's the additional documentation?
Right, right. There were certain selections that weren't provided.
Okay. Okay. Are there, are there additional tools or soft, software that's needed to be able to provide the necessary documentation?
I don't believe so. Michelle, do you know more on that?
I don't think so, but it'll, next time that the fire department's supplying for federal grants, like FEMA grants, it's a matter of making sure that all the department documentation for salaries, overtime, et cetera, was, a lot of that was a huge volume in the last few years and just making sure that we've got every single piece of that together that we need to.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for everybody's efforts on that.
And I think to note, the issue, it's one of volume, right? And it's not, this was not a, it was not noted to be a pervasive issue. It was noted to be that in one particular item in the sample was significant enough to push it over a threshold. So, I, I don't want to be an alarmist, and I, that's Jim's job, but at the end of the day, I just, I do want to be clear that, you know, it was not brought to the committee's attention that this was a pervasive horrific issue. It was just one of, of volume and, and size of a particular sample.
Thank you for the perspective.
Right. And I would, I would just also add too, Joe, I think you brought up a point earlier about the, the design of the internal controls and it, the, the rest of the documentation we reviewed indicated that the design of the internal controls was there. It's just a matter of, like Michelle brought up, the documentation for some of the selections not being available or accurate.
Right.
No. And just to clarify what, what you said, so the unmodified opinion was the overall opinion of all the financial statements submitted, correct?
That's right.
And is that, is that the top one a municipal government can receive? Is that accurate?
That's right. On, on the annual comprehensive financial report with the financial statements there, that's correct. It's, it's the top opinion. The modified opinion is specifically related to compliance, which is a, a federal spending opinion. So, outside of the financial statements, but one that we have to express when we audit the financial statements.
Great. Well, thank you, Doug, for your leadership and thank you, committee. Jim, thank you. And Anne, thank you for your continued great work. Appreciate it.
Could you just explain the relation between this audit and the audits that's done for another town department, if you will, namely Hingham Light? Because I, that's a carve-out from this, isn't it?
I think that's a fair statement. There's actually, Hingham Light engages a different audit firm to perform that audit. They're also perform, they're also presented, the enterprise fund is presented on a different fiscal year-end than the rest of the town.
Right.
So, we have to perform certain procedures as the town's overall auditor where we can place reliance on the audit of Hingham Light because they're engaging a separate auditor. So, there's certain communications we're required to make. We have to look at those financial statements and make sure that there's a proper conversion into the ACFR. But overall, I think that the key point there being is that our, our intention as town auditors to place reliance on that audit report and there's certain procedures we have to do in town's audit to be able to rely on the electric light report.
Okay. But you, so you don't do a separate auditor, then they have their own auditors, and you're relying on their information as one of the inputs for this?
That's correct. And that's also reflected in our opinion on the ACFR as well. It'll, it'll indicate the proportions that we are not expressing an opinion on. It's based on the opinion of the other auditors.
Okay. Is there anything that's not in this report that you think should be communicated to this board in terms of any, any, anything that needs to be changed with the town? It sounds like you're, you're happy. I just want to make sure that you really are.
Right, right. If there were, so, when we look at the overall scope of the reports, really the, the significant issues that would come up would show up in that GAO internal control report. So, those would be the most concerning as it relates to financial reporting or compliance. And we did have a finding, that's the, that's the one significant concern we want to point out. Management letter, there were a couple of comments, but those aren't arising to the significance of, of this board or the audit committee needs to know about. It's more just standard practices to communicate to management. So, I think if there were anything additional we'd want to communicate, they would be in the management letter at this point. So, I feel that the management letter is reflective of, of what we wanted to communicate to management for this year's audit.
Great. Any questions from any member of the public? So, this is, it's an important document, and we rely on your work, both of you. And it really enables the town to move forward with financing and other aspects. And we appreciate that this is comprehensive and we're glad that it's positive. So, so thank you. Thank you all. And in light of that, I am prepared to accept a motion, to accept the report.
I'll make a motion to accept, accept the fiscal year 2024 financial statements and management letter as submitted.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
An aye, man aye as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we will move to fiscal year 26 departmental budget requests. And first up will be the health department. We have Susan Sarny here. Good to see you.
Good seeing you.
So, please proceed.
The Hingham Health Department enforces over 20 local and state regulations in the community for food establishments, beach water testing, communicable disease surveillance, tobacco control, private well, septic systems, building permits and soil testing, to name a few. The most exciting work that we've been doing is on the mental health and social work done for our residents. And we have a list of projects that I can go over, probably in the next couple of slides, for FY 26. The social worker has been using the opioid settlement funds, and so far, we have two residents in sober homes. In FY 26, we are hoping to have our first health fair with local residents for both health and mental health services and events. We're also working on events at the Hingham Public Library to continue mental health programs for all ages under 60 and start a new book club for parents on mental health wellbeing for young adults. Lastly, we're going to be collaborating with new stakeholders to join our mental health task force to assist the community with programming and individual needs. For the health department, we're going to continue to provide health services and programs using our regional grant with Cohastin Situate. Future programs that we're working on will consist of Stop the Bleed, Community CPR, and bringing the Dana Farmer van to Hingham. The public health nurse has also been working on Ask a Nurse program, and she has that at the Hingham Public Library, at Baxter Park, Lincoln Schools, and at the senior center. So, those are just some of the things for FY 26 that we're working on. And these are just some of the budget numbers. We're, don't anticipating any changes. Everything's a 3% increase as of last year, no new positions, and I don't anticipate anybody retiring or leaving the department. As far as expenses, we decreased meeting and seminars as there's been a lot more being done online with Zoom, so we don't have to travel there. And water testing was a big increase over last year. I brought that up a little bit as town, the town beaches had some bacteria as well as the other private associations that we test. So, that came up a little bit. And then for other contract services, they're going to be moving health imperatives and self-shore resources and advocacy center budgets into the health department for FY 26.
Susan, the expenditures that you have here, the $424,000, is that inclusive of money that we spend from the opioid settlement? Or is that, that opioid money is in it separate?
We'll bring that budget to you guys probably, you know, may.
Okay.
So, the big increase here, just so I can jump in, the big increase is the, is a result of the health imperatives and self-shore resource and advocacy center being, being lumped into now Susan's budget. Those budgets will now be zeroed out and will be 100% decrease in both of those budgets. Historically, they'd been their own budget. We just put them in the health department this year.
Great. Good. So, I know, Susan, I mean, the, the town has, ever since COVID, has been focusing very much on health, welfare, and, and not just COVID, suicide issues. And I will say that your department has really responded and the town is all the better for it. So, so thank you. Art, is there anything you wanted to add on this budget?
I would just say two things. First, I think we're all very proud of our health department and the, the work that they've done and the leadership that Susan has provided. And I just wanted to stress, you know, we keep the opioid services budget separate from the operating budget in part because it gives us a lot more flexibility. We're outside this annual process. And as we identify changes, that makes sense, you know, in the field, we can bring them to you and discuss them immediately.
Got it. Thank you. Michelle, anything you wanted to?
Nope, thank you.
Liz?
Thank you, Susan, for all that you've done in your department. The, so, related to the opioid money, the, we're still using part of that budget to cover the social worker, the salary, correct?
Yeah.
Is that at the same percentage that it was last year?
Yeah. I have her in my, for social work for 20 hours, and then we use 15 hours out of the opioid settlement money, because it's 35-hour, uh, week position.
Okay. And that seems like the right amount?
It is, yeah.
Okay, great. I noticed one of the bullets was the BU School of Public Health. What, what does that entail?
So, out of our regional grant we have with Cohastin Situate, it's a 10-year grant the state's giving for regional activities. We hired as part of the three towns, Boston University to do a health assessment, equity study on the three towns to see what we're lacking and where we can improve our services across the board to all our residents. So, there's surveys out there. They're online. There's going to be paper copies at the library and at the senior center that anybody needs it. If anybody needs it, they can contact the health department and take part in that survey. BU will recompiling the data and giving us a full report on what they find out. And then we'll know where our needs are and we can address that.
Excellent. Great. Thank you.
I mean, I know it's a, a smaller budget item, but the 20% cost in the water testing, is that because we're using a new service or just the cost across the board has gone up?
The cost across the board from the lab has gone up. I did increase the fees associated when that to the private associations that are required to test. If there's anybody swimming and waters in Hingham, we're required to test it as part of the association or at the public beach. Unfortunately, the testing is increasing, so I had to increase the testing cost line.
How often do you test in summertime? Is it weekly?
We test every Tuesday weekly from Memorial Day to Labor Day. If there is an uptick in bacteria and I can get out there the next day, I'll test it. Unfortunately, if I can't because we're title, I can't, don't have enough water to sample, I will have to close the beach and test the next day.
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you for your leadership, Sue, and your entire department does a great job. I also want to note that Liz Miller has been fantastic. Our outreach efforts have been, 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 been well-received by the community. I was at the library the other day checking out a book, and I noticed that she has office hours there, which is fantastic. So, my appreciation to Liz for all she's doing to help the team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have historic preservation, and we have someone from the select board, a former select board official here. Good to see you, Heidi.
Hello.
So, please walk us through.
Okay, so my name's Heidi Goll. I'm the new historic preservation administrator for the Town of Hingham. I started in the very end of this past summer, so I've been in the position for a few months. So, I can go over some of our mission and services. First, the Historical Commission was established in 1974 by a town meeting vote. They plan and implement programs to identify, evaluate, and protect historic resources. We maintain and regularly update the historic inventory of architectural and archaeological resources, work with town departments to ensure the consideration of historic resources in community planning efforts, and especially in the master plan, coordinate a review of state or federally-funded local, local projects with the Massachusetts Historical Commission to ensure the protection of local historic resources, and promote public awareness of Hingham's history and heritage. And I also support the Historic Districts Commission, which was established in 1966. We have six districts and multiple extensions on several of them. So, they're basically a design review board, and we talk to property owners and the representatives, contractors, real estate agents, to achieve an end product to their plans that meet their needs and the. and the standards set forth by the Secretary of the Interior. Other initiatives that we have, if we can go down a little bit. Yearly, we sponsor an annual essay contest focused on Hingham's history. A senior at the high school is presented with a cash award for this. We fund eligible projects with grants from the Green Bush Historic Preservation Trust, and we continue the annual Town of Hingham Preservation Award, which I believe we've stopped for a couple of years, but I hope to reinstitute this year, the coming year. And we also help with the town's master plan and a possible townwide preservation plan, which was recommended in the master plan. In addition, we would be interested in creating a walking trail to connect downtown to Hingham Harbor. And there are a couple of other projects that we deal with as well. We have a lecture series every year that's supported by the Historical Commission. It's the Virginia Tay Memorial Lecture Series. And last year, we had the opportunity to have Ken Burns, which was really exciting. So we hope to continue that as well. Our main job is to maintain the integrity of our history and our historical assets. Okay, so our overall budget for this year is $88,820, which is down $9,433, or 9.6% from the prior year. Mainly, that's due to salary, because the former department head had been here for, I think, 25 years. And she, so her salary was higher than mine, obviously, and she also received longevity, which I do not receive. So our main expenses are my salary. And then we would go to, if you want to go through all the line items or some of them that have changed. Office supplies, we, you'll see that at $600 this year, was 200 last year. The actual was 138.07. We budgeted for 200. The reason it's gone up so much is because we did have one line item last year that was just called miscellaneous, and it was $600. So when we went over the budget, we decided that maybe we would try to keep that money in our budget, but split it up. Miscellaneous just seemed like, you know, I got questions as what would we use it for? So we decided to try to keep it in the budget, but move half of it to office supplies and then half to printing services. And there were quite a few things I needed to have printed when I started in the position. We needed a lot of new supplies and, you know, business cards and things like that. So you'll see a change there as well. But meetings and seminars is the same. I hope to use some of that money to put it to good use and try to find some seminars that will be educational. And seeing that I'm new in the position, I'd like to further learn some new things. So dues will keep the same. The annual assessment is $2,000. We did spend exactly $2,000 last, we did spend recently about $2,000. And that is for, we tried to find maybe five or so monuments that need some renovation around town, and we just completed in the end of October in the past. We've also gotten some CPC money for projects like that. But we like to book some, you know, some room in our budget for it as well. So if you have a chance to look at the monuments, there were five that were recently done. If you're driving around town, Rockland Street and the DPW, and a couple of other places around town, Hingham Hall Street, there was two, and New East Square. And they look really nice, so we're really excited about that. So like I said, Printing Services is up to $600 from 300. We'll see, we may not need to use it all. Hopefully, we won't. And maybe that's just a temporary increase for this year. The Bell Tower, we pay for their light bulb at the Bell Tower, and we also pay for any repair and maintenance. So we decided to keep that budget the same as it was. And we'll see if we need, you know, it may go down in future years if we don't need as much repair. So.
Great. Thank you. Liz?
Excellent. Well, we miss you, Heidi, in this. Very grateful to have your leadership in this department. So, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I'm excited for your initiatives and new projects and the energy that you're bringing to this. So thank you. I don't have any questions about the budget.
Heidi, the Green Bush Mitigation Fund, how much is in there and what's a criteria for use? I know it's going to be within two miles of the train tracks, correct?
Yeah, there is, there are certain areas, and there are some areas that are extended a little ways that when we did the MOU with the MBTA back, I think it was in 2000, the town identified, you know, different property areas that would fit the criteria. And it's really to mitigate the, any ongoing repair that's caused by, you know, the train tracks and the train going by people's houses. So they've done a lot of repairs, like windows, mostly exterior things. I think the Community Center did do an interior project, but mostly it's exterior projects. We have over a million dollars in our account, and so that changes slightly every year because it's invested. But we decided to, what's in the MOU, that we're going to give out 100, up to $100,000 per year for the grants, no more than $50,000 to one homeowner or community organization or the town to one grant.
And there's a million dollars in that account?
Yeah.
And how much is, is all of the income investment income? Or is it, does the MBTA can put money in there every year?
No, it's investment income.
Okay.
And, you know, we decided, I guess the town decided at one point, just do the $100,000, because that way we will get, you know, many years out of this money, and we're not going to deplete it all at once.
Does the property have to have a historical component to it to qualify? Or is it just, is the property impacted by the?
Yeah, it's just an impact zone, which is typically a historic district. Could be something on the inventory, but I think most are in historic districts.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the veteran memorial cleaning is fantastic. And is this a list of like 20, and you're doing five years? Is that what?
That's what we've been doing.
Great.
We may, there's a possibility that we may use a little bit of the money, if we can, to maybe do some upgrades on the Iron Horse. I just got an estimate for doing that. And so we'll see if it's within our budget. But it would be nice to have it completely resurfaced. It has a lot of scratches.
Yeah, yeah. Well, as Liz said, we miss you in the Select Board office, but we're happy where you're at, and thanks for your good work.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. Getting back to the MBTA fund, what's the deadline for people to apply each year?
It's in the spring. We haven't set the exact date yet, but it's coming up this spring. And decisions would be probably around April, and then we'll review them in May. And then June is usually when they approve the grants or give out the grant.
Great. So very thorough report. We really appreciate what you're doing. And yes, we miss you. Good to see you. Okay, thank you. That's it. We now move on to Information Technology and Bill Hardigan. Now, you're not going to start out with one of those tests that turns out to be someone who's trying to spam us, and then you.
I'm not going to tell you what I'm doing, Joe.
You do these phishing tests and all these other tests?
It's just to you.
We have to be, at least I have to be on my toes. What can I say?
See, the people that keep clicking the wrong thing keep getting more tests. That's all. There is remedial training that happens.
I'll take it.
Although, funny you should ask about that, Joe. We're going to work, the state offers a grant program where they'll fully fund that cybersecurity training. And they've switched in the last six, nine months to the same product we use, at the same license level we use. So I'm going to be working with the state to move that over, thereby making some savings in our budget.
Oh, good. I get these emails.
Great, great way to see that. I appreciate it.
I feed, I send these, I forward them to you, say, is this really it? And Bill usually says, no, no, glad you didn't respond.
Good eye, good eye.
So please, present your budget.
Certainly. For, just for the record, I'm Bill Hardigan, the Director of Information Technology here. You know, we provide all technology services to the entire town, exclusive of the HMLP and the school, they do their own technology. But all other town departments, boards, committees, and whatnot, we're it. Email, MUNIS, websites, everything. You know, I know we've got some things listed within the budget book, but it's the same thing every year because we don't really increase things. But, you know, there's a lot of stuff. We keep going. So I won't bore everybody with going over all the details. But some of the key initiatives we have, FY25 projects completed or underway. You know, we had an out-of-date operating system and exchange environment, which we've remediated and replaced that. That was actually a finding on the audit report, but we fixed it before the management letter, and I was able to weigh in and give that response as well. But it was on our plan to remediate that. We're in the process of implementing the townwide phone system, which we had, you know, voted on in private last year. On the 16th, we will migrate Town Hall, DPW, Library, Harbor Master onto that system. Foster School is already on it with the new building. Didn't make sense to put the old system in the old building, so they're on it. They opened them on the second with a new system operating there. So very soon, we will have all town operations on, and we're working with the school to schedule around between school vacations and whatnot, what makes sense on their schedule to move them. But, you know, the goal is to, by June 30th, be off the existing system and fully on the new system. So looking forward to that. Obviously, preparation for the new public safety facility involved with that. You know, we've got equipment in, we're working on the project plan to replace two of our core server appliances, just part of our routine maintenance and repair. It's part of our, it's part of a capital line that we have, annual routine upgrades. So, you know, we're doing that. That'll be coming up soon. And then constantly desktops, laptops, monitors. Things we're looking for in the new budget, in the FY26 budget. Again, we've got some storage arrays that are actually in that picture. But they're end of life, no longer supported by the vendor, but we're going to replace them. And that's, again, part of our routine within the capital to replace those. And I know that's a separate request, but just want to call them out. You know, we've got a video recording server, which we actually had a failure in, got it back up and running, but it is end of life. So we're going to, rather than invest more money into it, we're going to replace it so we don't have to worry too much about it. And just routine maintenance on equipment. So I don't have any really big asks this year. I think I've done quite a bit the last couple of years, so hopefully, you know, that goodwill prevails as we get later in my budget numbers and you see the numbers. So Michelle, if we want to move on to the spreadsheet section of it. You know, I'll call out some of the big things. Obviously, in on the expense line, the telephone line is going up significantly. But we knew that with the new phone system. You know, we had hardware that was onsite. You didn't pay monthly fees for, new systems, you pay monthly fees for, so that's going up. Year one is covered under the project budget, the capital budget. But then we need to obviously account for this, which is, you see that big line item increase in the expense line, which is, you know, we've been talking about for a couple of years. It was softening the blow a little bit in total because we had a, under our computer service agreement, we had a roughly $30,000 line that was serviced and support for our current phone system. So we'll eliminate that from that and add that into the phone system. So moving some things around, but yeah, that number, you know, I can't ignore it. Significant increase in that one line for the phone system. But hopefully, you know, we've been talking about it for a couple of years, that it's not a surprise to anybody. And overall, we've tried to keep the budget within line and not have too much of an increase. But, you know, there are a lot of things, especially our big line, our contracted computer service agreements is just things we can't control. MUNIS goes up 5% or 6% every year. You know, that was $117,000 this fiscal year. So, you know, 5% on top of that.
Right.
Linear math on that thing. Civic Plus, I think, I believe is a 6% this year. They've already given us a heads up of what they're going to go up for the websites. So, you know, it's just, that's just things that we can't control. We eliminate MUNIS maybe, but, you know, that's not going to happen. I don't think anybody wants to go back to green bar paper and keeping track of the accounts that way. Happy to answer any questions that anybody has on any specifics, but that's the real big thing, is the phone system.
So, well, first, thank you for not only the work you do, but for keeping the town safe. Lots of towns, not just in Massachusetts, but elsewhere, have experienced cyber attacks. And there's no guarantee it won't happen, but you've certainly put the systems in place to minimize the risks. So we really appreciate that.
To that point, the city of Lowell is still recovering from two years ago. To the tune of above $4 million as well.
Wow.
In expense.
But getting back to the phone system, is that, and you mentioned that it was put into foster school, and is it going to be in all the schools?
Correct.
Is the budget for that in the school budget or is it in your budget?
Right now, it's in this budget. Michelle and I have been talking about that, where, how it should be split. That's a conversation that Tom, Michelle are having.
Okay. Great. That was my only question. Liz?
Well, thank you for the presentation and the budget and all the work that you do. Sort of along those lines, just wondering what budget associated with the public safety facility is included here?
There really isn't a lot. We're not adding a lot of tech in there that we already have.
Okay.
You know, other than that AllCom system, but that's, they have that now, and I believe they cover that within the Fire Department's budget, so it's not mine. But we're really not adding much more. Obviously, the public safety facility project funded the hardware we're going to be installing. But there's not a lot of new additional tech that we're really adding, so I'm not forecasting. There's still a lot of, you know, balls up in the air on that project, and maybe FY27, I may have a slightly different answer to that question. But for 26, I'm not anticipating anything that we have to accommodate.
Okay. And there is in other additional software packages or licenses that you're looking for for fiscal 26?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Because if there are, she's going to ask you what the maintenance fees are each year.
It's fair. I mean, I used to be a software developer. We just told people 10% a year for maintenance whenever we sold the software.
Yep.
That was in healthcare. That was easy.
Great. Thank you so much.
Bill?
So to follow on Joe's question, cybersecurity and what you need for that. Do you have everything you need? I'm hoping we have the state the best possible security we can afford.
We're in very good shape, you know, work with our partners in the state and local level, and seek out grants as well for those things. So, you know, part of, part of that is routine maintenance, eliminating out-of-date operating systems and other services that can't be patched. We need to replace them. So that's, you know, like the exchange server we did. We've got a few other servers, the same thing, they're end of life, and we need to remain current. So I'm trying to build a lot of that in there. The biggest, you know, the best defense is a great offense, and just to stay current on as much as we can. But we do have a lot of good defenses in place. One thing we're bringing in, upgrading our network circuit here at Town Hall, and we're going to have a mirror circuit at the public safety facility through Comcast. It's a dedicated managed service, whereas currently, we have Comcast and Verizon, basically a business class, which is only a half a step above what you have at home and residential. So if it goes down, maybe 48 hours, they might get out and fix it. This is a four-hour SLA. But with that, they also offer additional cybersecurity services they can layer on in front of our door.
Right.
So they can block things and filter things at their perimeter before it even gets here. So, you know, we're putting a lot of things in place and looking to add those services in the future. But right now, we're just going to bring the internet access to start, and then we'll look at other options. But always keep my eye for these kind of things to see what other opportunities we can have.
Great. Thank you.
So no one should use password as their password. Number one for cybersecurity.
One, two, three, four. That's my luggage. Baseball reference for anybody.
I got it.
I got it.
Art or Michelle, anything you wanted to add?
I just want to add that Bill has a huge piece, along with Kate and Joe, his team, on helping us try to use some of the software systems that we already own and trying to do more with them, so he, him and Ann having key parts of trying to, you know, expand MUNIS access to departments, to try to get people into employee cell service, so you can check your own W2s and Pay Subs and things like that, so appreciate him always looking, especially, you know, with the budget considerations in mind of how we can better use what we were already paying for to do things more efficiently, so thank you.
Great. Tom, anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm good. Bill knows how, how important, I know the job that he does is, and, and we talk regularly.
Yes, great.
Great job, though.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Have a good evening.
You too. We now move to town meeting. Michelle, you gonna do that?
Sure, Tom and I will do it. Town meeting budget, so we are, as you guys know, this is our annual event. Every spring, we only budget for an annual town meeting, if there's ever a special town meeting, we do that separately through our reserve fund, because we don't know if we're necessarily going to have one. We are planning for one town meeting, that would be over two nights, mostly because the audiovisual equipment and services that we have to procure, you basically have to pay for two nights upfront, because you're reserving a whole team and equipment for a second evening, and we're only able to give them notice at like 11:00 PM the first night, if we don't need them the second day, so we'll plan for the two nights, and in the last few years, we have had multi-night meetings for town meeting.
We're planning for indoor.
Indoor town meetings, yes, so in my, in my memory, since I've been here almost seven years, most of the meetings have been one night, but those are mostly COVID-related, COVID-era outdoor meetings, where we kind of had a long afternoon, but in the last few years, we had a three-night meeting, a two-night meeting, et cetera. So, the biggest line items in this, I'll just, I'll just jump down to that piece. The two biggest pieces of the town meeting budget are those audiovisual services, to make sure that folks in the gym, on the auditorium, and maybe the cafeteria can see and hear everything that they need to, and also, we print and mail 10,000 warrants to folks in town every year, so those are the, the two biggest items that are driving this budget. There are some additional costs, rental of chairs, we added live transcription services a few years now to try to improve accessibility, we always have some small fees related to advertising, and a stenographer who provides the official town meeting transcript and record. But all in all, we are projecting that a, this, you know, a two-night town meeting is costing pretty close to $100,000, so about $97,800, again, with those, you know, AV and the printing and mailing of the warrants being the biggest two pieces there. I skipped over some of the salaries, but we do have support from our maintenance team, both in the school and the town hall maintenance team that helps set up, and then we have some small part-time salaries for Carol's team, who helps people check into the meeting.
Is it a legal requirement that we mail the warrant, as opposed to giving people the option if they want to receive it electronically?
So, right now, there are two options in the general bylaws, and one is to mail, mail it, deliver it to every household in Hingham, and the other is to print the whole thing in a newspaper of general circulation, or whatever the requirement is, which I think would also be pricey and less accessible, but it has been kind of talked about in the last few years of, do we want to do that differently? Would we want to do a bylaw change to have a different approach that maybe had an opt-in list for mailing, or a smaller number of warrants printed and available at Town Hall, the library, and other places?
Do we know what other towns, have, have, have any switched to making it available electronically as an alternative?
I'm not sure, but I, I'm, I can check with a few other, a few other towns, there's some listservs that we can quickly ask questions to.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Liz?
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. I would definitely be interested in what other towns are, are doing, and what the budgets look like, and certainly researching, changing the bylaw. This has just gotten, obviously, it's a very, very important aspect of our town government and how our whole town operates, so I'm not minimizing that at all, but it's, it's very expensive, especially given how, how many people show up generally, kind of cost per head, it's, it's very expensive, so I would like to look at some best practices of, of what maybe other towns are doing, so we can just try to get the cost down and increase, while increasing engagement.
Right.
The goal is to obviously get all of the citizens there, but, so, I, I would like to do some more work on this and figure that out.
Great. Bill?
Yeah, so, real quick, so it looks like audiovisual was, in '23, was actually 113, and now it's 58.
Yes, so in '23, we had two town meetings, we had the special in November '22.
Ah, the special, okay.
And then the spring was a two-nighter for the override in April of '23, so it just, you know, you just had a lot more.
Forgot about the special, so that, that's why the printing services in '23 was, were also doubled than what they are budgeted for '26.
That's right, two meetings.
Two meetings, got it, okay. You know, you and I have talked about this, a lot of interest in possibly going to electronic voting. I know that probably would be a decision that the moderator would have to weigh in on and have a lot of influence over. How much, do, any idea how much that equipment costs?
I've seen different estimates from towns, I know some other towns, like Long Meadow, did a whole study, Hull uses them, Duxbury uses them, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but we can get you some, you know, more current pricing from them, and that's certainly something, if the board and the moderator want to move in that direction, we can put together, you know, a budget and, and things to support that.
I'm just, just thinking, if the cost of a town meeting is about 50,000, the equipment probably would not be 50,000, and we would use it in subsequent years, it would, would, my opinion, would make the meeting probably more efficient, the votes would go quicker, particularly where you have a standing vote or a ballot vote, it would just be electronic, so we would, we would realize a savings, a significant savings, over the course of future years, because we would have less meetings.
I think that's right, and, and Town Meeting already has voted to approve electronic voting as an alternative, and, you know, we, we don't have the equipment to implement that, but it is something that's not mandatory at this point, but it, it's an option that's, that's available, so I agree, Bill, we, we really should look into those costs.
Yeah, we should talk to the, the, the bylaw, my understanding says, at the moderator's discretion.
Correct.
Right, so it would have to be their, the moderator's call, but we probably should maybe have a discussion with our moderator about, would he be opposed to looking into it and discussing it, maybe looking at the numbers, I think it might be a good way to move forward. I mean, I, I love the way Town Meeting is now, I don't think this would really impact the, the spirit of it at all, it actually would just make it more efficient, yeah.
Great.
And just one other question, Michelle, when do we have to decide if it's a two-night meeting?
So, to, if we're gonna reserve the audiovisual, you know, equipment or team for two nights, you're basically paying for that upfront, like you can't...
What is that date, though? Have you already done that?
No, we'll do a procurement, every year, we have to do a competitive procurement that David will help us with this year, to see who responds, and if it's the same, you know, folks as last time, then we're finalizing that contract a month or two ahead of the meeting, and we don't have to decide then, we always ask for a quote for both the first night and the second night.
Okay.
But as we get closer, I, I can ask them, it's probably, you know, a few weeks out in terms of, they're giving up other business, you know what I mean?
Sure, no, I understand that.
With those teams.
I do, yeah.
But we also did the auditorium last year for the third night, and that's already equipped with a lot of that, you know, a lot of that equipment, so it's kind of like, if we are comfortable that the second night will be 500 people or under, then we can certainly do in the auditorium, it's just trying to prepare for the event that it's not, and then it's hard to, you can't hold the meeting if there are 100 folks waiting in the hallway or, you know, can't participate.
Right.
But that's kind of the, you know, the calculus every year of how close we're gonna be. I liked using the auditorium, at least we have tested it, we know it works, and we were able to do that kind of more in-house.
Yes. I, I, I just, what I was thinking is, once we know how many articles there are, we might have a better gauge of if two nights are really needed. I know not, that's not all guaranteed, and lots of things happen at town meeting, and discussions can go long, but depending on, you know, if there's less articles theoretically, or, you know, a scope that would fit in one night, that might be a decision point.
Yeah, and, and if we're comfortable that if a second night happened, that the auditorium would be sufficient, then we could kind of just go with the one night. It's not, that doesn't cut the AV costs in half, it's more like, you know, two-thirds upfront, and then it's just keeping that equipment that's already in place, because some of it's the setup, the cleanup, et cetera, but it would, you know, reduce that line item a bit.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great. So, let's move on to the reserve fund.
Okay. Reserve fund, just pull this up. So, there is a state law that allows municipalities to have a reserve fund, and per the town's financial policy, we typically budget that at .75% of the operating budget. Let me just go down. So, if we stick with that practice, we would be looking at about $837,000 for the reserve fund for FY26. This is something that typically, then, the select board and the advisory committee consider using towards the end of the fiscal year, as we know, you know, what unexpected things happen that year, what accounts may overrun, you know, that we weren't able to anticipate.
So, those are those reserve fund transfer votes?
That's right.
We typically do.
Yes.
And what is the relationship between this and fund balance?
Um, so this is a, this is a budgeted department or line item, so it's part of our, it's something that's available as part of the operating budget.
This is part of the operating budget?
Yes, so we can pull from it during the year with the approval of this board and the advisory committee. Fund balance is kind of the savings account for the town, that can only be appropriated through town meeting. Sometimes, often, we do have to dip into fund balance at town meeting to replenish the reserve fund, to make sure that we're covering some things that we did not anticipate.
So...
And, and to the extent there's any additional leftover money in this account at the end of the year, it would fall to fund balance, like all other town budgets.
That's right.
Right. So, in many ways, fund balance is a, goes on the statement of assets and liabilities, and this is more of an operating?
Yes.
Yes. Fund balance is a, is a balance sheet item, really.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good question, though.
Liz, any questions?
Just, just kind of a simple question. This is .75% of the operating budget as estimated right now.
So, we always do the calculation, looking at, like, the, for the FY26 number, it's based on the FY25 operating budget, because if not, everything keeps fluctuating, and the number would always move, so it's always kind of based on the prior year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Bill, do you have any other questions?
No, I was gonna ask Liz's question, how, how, how we budget it, and how we predict what we're gonna need. Thank you.
I think that concludes, unless anyone else has a, something they want to add to this? So then, we can move to the preliminary fiscal year '26 financial forecast. And Tom and Michelle, I'm gonna turn this one over to you.
Okay, let me just... Everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're a little bit behind in putting this together this year, but this is our preliminary FY26 forecast. We always look out five years, so this is FY26 through FY30. I'm just gonna go over this front page kind of at the high level. So, at the top, you always have the sources, the revenues of the town, at the bottom, you have the uses, or how we're gonna spend it, the expenditures, and the main, as, for all Massachusetts municipalities, our main source of funding for the town are property taxes, so you have the levy here in the top. The levy is always built on, based on last year's levy, plus two and a half percent, plus new growth, and new growth is about the, you know, the new developments in town, everything from big new buildings to small, you added, you know, a garage or something to your home. I want to talk about new growth for a second, because if you look at FY25, the new growth came in a bit higher than we anticipated at 961, and Erin Delaney, our assessor, attributes that to the new technology that I think she mentioned during her budget hearing.
Yes.
Using the flyover technology and the AI kind of analysis of it, we are able to capture some of the different changes more, you know, more than we have in the past. I'm not sure that trend will necessarily continue, because I, I see that as kind of a catch-up, and then the incremental changes going forward, that technology will still help us identify, but it's almost like we, you know, captured more than we have in the past. The 780 that you see for FY26 is related to Linden Ponds, and then we've kind of held it steady in the out-years, that kind of the typical new growth that you see in town, the smaller home and business improvements. The gray line that I have here is the debt exclusions, or the excluded debt right now per our, per our debt schedule, that will change slightly based on the bond and band sale that we do at the end of the month. So, all of that together, the 119, that's the tax levy, the main source of revenue. Going down, we have other sources of revenue that are much smaller by comparison, we have state aid, we're, we're forecasting that flat per conversations with Joan Moschino for now. Once we go to the MMA conference at the end of the month, and the state starts to do some of, you know, their House and Senate proposals for the FY26 budget, we'll revise our number based on how that's coming out and what the governor says at the conference. Local receipts are made up of a number of things through the different departments, and Tom and I have some additional analysis to do there, we want to look more closely at building permits, investment income, and the motor vehicle excise tax, some information will come out later this month about motor vehicle excise tax and other items, so we may be able to revise that, but we are seeing some growth there. Right now, we are not projecting to use any fund balance to fill any budget gaps, I'm just gonna go down. The next three, Country Club, Weir River Water and Sewer, as you know, are all self-supporting, so the revenue you see on the top of the forecast is offset or supports the expenditures at the bottom, they, they cancel each other out. We always budget $500,000 for the pilot, the payment in lieu of taxes from the light plant, and last year, I think, was one of the first times that it did hit 500,000, which is great, I believe that is based on a kilowatt, per kilowatt hour sold by HMLP in terms of what the town gets. We have had a proliferation of stabilization funds in the last few years that we've set up for different reasons. The top two that you see here are set up to reduce the impact of taxes on some of the capital projects, so the 178 and the 2 million are offsetting school and the public safety facility projects at the top. So, we are still paying all of the debt service for those projects, but not all of it is coming from people's taxes. And then there are a few smaller items, like municipal waterways, it's offsetting part of the Harbor Master budget, but it leads you to a total sources of about 167 million. At the bottom here, you can see that this is all leading, right now, the budget deficit is just under a million dollars at this point in the process. The uses that come out of this are, there are state assessments, so the state gives us money, but we also pay the state money for different services, like the MBTA in town. We have an overlay account that we always fund, this is managed by the Board of Assessors, that's where we pay people's property exemptions, property tax exemptions and abatements each year. And then there are, like, the big things, you know, there's the capital budget that we've committed to increasing by 100,000 each year, so it's 3.5 million this year. The reason it's bigger in the prior years is, at the end of this process, you always add the sewer capital and the Harbor Master capital to it, so the number will go up, but the true kind of base capital is 3.5 million. And then we have all of Article Six and Article Four that are all graded out right now. That's all fed by, right now, this forecast contains the three and a half percent assumptions for the school budget and the municipal budget, and then some of the other shared services budget, like health insurance and other employee benefits, property and liability insurance, we have a lot of that in just at 10% right now, because we don't have enough information yet to make those adjustments. Health insurance rates typically come out in early March, and that's when we do a big analysis to tweak that budget. But right now, at this part of the process, about $950,000 deficit. We did set aside money in the Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund to close budget gaps this year and next year, so that's something that we could use if needed, but we'll have a few more iterations of this as more information and analysis becomes available, and hopefully we'll be seeing that number get smaller, not larger. The budgets that we've all presented to you guys in terms of the municipal departments are not at their three and a half percent level yet, but this forecast reflects where we will be, you know, by the end of the process.
So, your bottom-line forecast right now is for a shortfall of 948,000.
Correct, yes.
And then it really starts jumping up as we go into 27, fiscal year 2027.
Right. We do have 3.5 million in that Tax Mitigation Stabilization Fund that I mentioned to help us live through these next few years.
Yes. Were you gonna, I don't, I don't think we're gonna go into the subsequent detail unless you want to ask about that, so I'll turn it over to you, Liz.
Thank you for presenting this and starting the conversation here. Can you just talk us through the timeline of when the forecast group is meeting, when the budget, municipal budget, budgets?
Yes.
are going to be within the 3.5% and re-presented?
Sure. So this one came together a little bit late in the process this year. So the forecast group met this afternoon to go over this. And it's on your agenda and the advisory committee's meeting this evening. I believe it will go to the school committee probably next week. The next kind of pieces of information we get are late January, so the MMA conference on some state stuff, and the end of January about the motor vehicle excise tax, which is our biggest piece of local receipts. So I would anticipate probably early February, version two. And then we could look at one, if it makes sense, later in February. But I think the next big piece of information is the health insurance budget, which is typically the first few days of March. So maybe we'll target early February, early to mid-March right there. And then in terms of the municipal budgets, we still have many more to present to you over the next few weeks. Last year, we presented Tom's recommendations in terms of how we fit in the 3.5% in mid-February. But as soon as we're able to wrap up the departmental budgets, then we'll kind of know the full number that's in there and what we may need to cut down to reach that threshold. It is complicated, because there are some collective bargaining negotiations going on, as you know. But I would say by mid-February, we'll be presenting those recommendations of how we're going to fit in.
I think, can I just jump in?
Please.
So Liz, I think one of the important things to remember is, what we're presenting here is a 3.5% growth in Article 6. That won't change. There's a lot of work to do in the background. But by the time we have a final forecast, that 3.5% increase is going to be the same or less. Don't expect it to be much less, but it won't, it won't be higher than that. It's the work between now and then that's going to be the heavy lift in terms of how we get to that 3%. Because what you're hearing from the departments is not a 3.5 budget. That's what I'll present to you in February.
Right, understood.
Bill? In terms of the local receipt number, so you said that this number did not include motor vehicle excise tax?
It does include it, but Lori gets a first commitment at the end of January that gives us more information about what we could forecast coming forward. A lot of what Tom and I did for now is either just forecast what we got in '24 or took an average of what came in in '23 and '24. But we'll have more information about what's going to come in, like this coming calendar year, and may be able to revise it, you know, upwards. Hopefully not downwards, but usually upwards. That one has trended up since COVID.
Yeah. And we have 3.5 in the tax mitigation fund, right?
Yes.
3.5 there, great. Well, you know, based on previous years, I think we're in a pretty good spot right now. Obviously, it'd be nice to have that number lower, but we've seen numbers 2.5 and higher some years, so.
That's right.
And the fact you're not predicting any need to use fund balance is fantastic. Obviously, we want to, we want to hold that. So, yeah, appreciate the report.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
In the background here, it looks like you're forecasting a, am I correct, a decrease in the meals tax revenue?
No, I don't believe so. We are going to, we are forecasting the same amount that we got in FY '24.
Oh, obviously.
Which is above what we forecasted in '25.
FY '25, it was down.
Oh, it was down to 10%, okay. Got it. So in many ways, to the extent that we help our local businesses and the restaurants, it comes back to the town with increased revenue?
I think, yeah, and I think just to clarify, the forecast in '25 is less than the actual in '24. So it's not that we received less, it's that.
It's the forecast.
It's the forecast was smaller than what we received, yes.
Got it.
And that's really recovered. I mean, meal tax got cut in half by the pandemic and has climbed back up and is doing really well. So thank you to everyone who eats out in Hingham. Please keep doing it.
You're welcome.
The town only gets 75 cents for every $100 that people spend in town. So you don't really feel it, but it's, you know, it's a million dollars that comes in every year, so.
Tom, anything else you wanted to add?
No, but exactly that. When you have the, when you have the decision to go to Weymouth or Cohasset for dinner or go down to the Snug or, you know, Toskas or down to, you know, Derby Street, please stay in Hingham.
Absolutely, that's why, I know you've been working to make sure that we have as many events in Hingham and that the people are welcome. And that's really part of connecting the harbor and the shipyard into the downtown. It's all, it all works to the town's benefit, yes. I think we're ready to move on, unless, Art, you have anything else you want to add?
Nothing to add.
Okay, great. So then we will move to consider approval of the 2025 Common Victrol License Renewals on the attached list. And I believe there are two, Chipotle Mexican Grill and Nona's Homemade Inc. I don't know why they left off the word ice cream from there.
These are just two that weren't ready when we did the rest.
I mean, I've reviewed the applications, they look complete. Liz or Bill, do you have any questions on them?
I have no questions.
No questions, no issues.
I'll note you'll have to deal with Ms. Montziger next to you if you don't, if you don't pass the Nona's one.
I know.
But you're at your own peril.
With that, I will, I guess, ask if there's any comments from members of the public. Seeing and hearing none, I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the renewal of the Common Victrol licenses as presented for calendar year 2025.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
An aye and an I as well, they are approved. Someone let Nona's know immediately, please. We next move to consider approval of the agreement with Waste, I'm going to pronounce it, Waste Quip Manufacturing Company LLC for a commercial stationary compactor for the Hingham Transfer Station. Is Ashley there? I see Ashley, how are you?
Hi.
Good to see you.
I had a fifth-grade concert that got out a little bit later than expected.
So tell us about the, replacing the trash compactor.
So the trash compactors last around 16 to 20 years. And we're in the process of just updating all of those right now. And so these will be ones that will upgrade those so that we're able to continue to do our work of getting the trash out of Hingham.
So this is a budget item for 71,000.
Yep.
What's the expected useful life?
16 to 20 years.
And?
The ones that we have now, we've had for 20 years.
And is there a warranty associated with this?
There is, just so I can jump in, there's a warranty that is part of the quote from Waste Quip. It is on, I believe, the second page. There is a three-year structural warranty and a one-year parts and a one-year labor.
Great. Okay, and what happens to the existing trash compactor?
Our plan is to actually move those up, and we will use them as paper compactors.
So you don't put the old compactor into the new one and compact it? That's, that's not.
No. No, we will still continue to use them. We just need a stronger, more updated one for the trash, because that's way more compacting. Paper one can do, can do the paper job.
So there actually is a useful second life for the, for the old compactor?
Yes, there is.
That's great. Liz, any questions?
Hi, Ashley, thank you.
Hi.
So the funding, this was part of the capital budget for '25, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. No other questions.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you, Ashley. So this is, we, this is the one, we have five of them, is that right, four or five?
Five.
Five. So are all of them now at 20 years? Are we going to, so will we be replacing one? Should we anticipate replacing one over the next couple of years?
Yes, we're replacing one more.
Okay. And we'll, I mean, are we, so are we going, should we anticipate replacing four more over the next couple of years?
It's, I have it in my capital outlay one that I don't have.
That's okay, no problem.
On my phone right now, sorry. We do, for the compactors, we are projecting to be replacing them over the next couple of years. So then they're all up to date.
Great, then.
More, yeah.
Great, thank you.
My recollection is it's a staggered process. It's not hitting us all in one year, it's staggering.
Exactly.
Right. Okay, great. Anyone else have anything to add on this? Any member of the public? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Waste Quip Manufacturing Company LLC for a commercial stationary compactor for the Hingham Transfer Station in an amount not to exceed 71,310.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
An aye and an I as well. Thank you, appreciate you being here.
Happy New Year. Merry night.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
Okay. Next, we have our standard appointments. And I'm not aware that we have any this evening, but there are some vacancies that we need to move on. I'll now move to public comment for items not on our agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on items that are not on our agenda? Seeing none, I'll move to town administrator, select board reports, starting with Art Robert.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Michelle?
Just a quick update on the Capitol Alley Committee. So this year, we decided to do the process a little bit differently. And they're holding their meetings in different locations to see some of the equipment and facilities in person. So we've been to the library, the fire station and Public Works. And Ashley and Randy and their team from Public Works did a great job last night having everything kind of set up in the garage for them to walk through and under and see. But just want to warn you that because the committee is understanding the needs, they may be asking for a little bit more money this year. But, so it's been a good process to have everyone see things in person, get educated. And I think the staff has appreciated being able to show, you know, kind of where they work and what they're working with, but.
Great, thank you. Tom?
No, only because I assume one of you will be discussing the events of last Friday, the large, big events in town of last Friday. Opening the school.
Liz?
Nothing to report. Let Bill talk about it.
Bill?
Yeah, Tom referenced Foster School opened up last Friday. It was a great day for the community, especially the foster community. I certainly have, I have, my daughter's there in the fifth grade. She was beyond excited to go. It was a great day for the, for the faculty, staff, the school department, the school committee. And so many people were involved with that effort. Want to thank all the residents who supported it. It was a big ask at town meeting, but it was a wonderful, wonderful project. I did reach out to the superintendent and the school committee about public tours. You know, right now, it's currently an active construction site, but they are going to offer tours in the future so the public can get in and see the beautiful building that it is. So congratulations to everyone in the school department, and it was a great day for Hingham.
Yes, and also, Tom, thank you for the response of the town, of the building department, just making sure that this was a priority, that if there were snags, they were resolved promptly so that the Foster School could move forward. So thank you, and I hope you extend thanks to the others on the town side who are really involved in making this happen.
I have, and I'll reiterate there, everyone's commitment to making that building safe. So it's worked out fantastic. Everyone wants to help. It's great.
And since this is our first meeting in the new year, I will just note that I think it was a very joyous and successful Christmas and Hanukkah season. And now we're into some cold weather. And I don't know how long it's going to be continuing, but I know in the past, if there are issues, the town will respond with respect to warming shelters or whatever may be needed. So far, I'm not aware of any of that happening, but if in fact it does, I know that we will respond. And with that, I would wish everyone a happy new year, and I'm prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
An aye and an I as well. We are adjourned.